Good afternoon, everybody. We had scheduled today a topping out ceremony at 1:15, but it's been continued until October 2nd because of the weather. We had a budget work session at 2 o'clock, and that was a public meeting, so I'm sorry you all missed it. It was invigorating. And before the start of tonight's meeting, we had an executive session. We discussed two items, one, real estate, and one, personnel, which are PBA contracts. Next item, we have a presentation from the Public Water and Sewer, Joe Van Houten, excuse me. Whenever you're ready, Joe. And for the viewing audience, can you introduce yourself, please, and why you're here?
Yeah, just wanted to make sure this is up. So my name's Joe Van Houten. I'm the chairman of the Public Water Sewer Advisory Committee for Doylestown Township. And we're here today to just provide an update and a request to the Board of Supervisors based on about three years of studies that we've done in some additional areas of the township that could possibly benefit from public sewers in the future. Right now, just as a reminder, we have three cycles altogether in Doylestown Township with regard to the septic management system. The area that we're here to talk about today is part of the Cycle 2. And Cycle 2 is bordered by, at the very top, it's Swamp Road at Route 313. It borders to the right on Edison Furlong. The very bottom is the 611 bypass, and to the far left is Route 202. The area that we're here to talk about is Phase 2. Phase 2 is bordered, again, to the right, is Edison Furlong. The very top is Pebble Hill Road, and then again, to the left, is 202, with the bottom being the 611 bypass area. What I wanted just to point out is that, as we've done in prior times, the maps detail areas that we've identified as having some issues with regards to performance of the septic systems. And what we've done is, over a three-year period, we've used a vast amount of data that's been collected. Let me turn to the next page. So we've gone through records from the Board of Health. We've used records from the septic management system, the Pumper-Hauler reports, Conestoga-Rover storm water sampling reports. We've also utilized, from the USDA, their soil data and real estate transaction records. We've utilized these from 2000, the year 2000, to the year 2016, in order to come up with the data that we're presenting today. What I wanted to show you in the beginning here is sort of just a, this is just an overview of some of the research that goes into this. So since 2014, my team and I, we've spent a vast amount of time poring through records and updating spreadsheets, along with a lot of these maps that you're going to see in the presentation. I apologize, little things keep popping up here. In the area in Phase 2, what we've done is, year by year, from 2000 to 2016, when going through the data and analyzing it, what we were looking at was trying to determine if something was a repair versus a replacement. Repairs were things that were minor, such as a distribution box being replaced, a really not cooperating, here. Distribution box being replaced. We also took into account of a baffle, or something minor had to be taken care of. I'm bringing my own computer next time. Major, I mean, obviously, a replacement is someone actually had to go in, work with the Board of Health, and had to actually replace their entire, their septic system, whether it's putting a new drain field in, or an entire new system. In some cases, it also involved having to put a holding tank in if there wasn't enough room on the property to put a new system in place. What we've done is, we've taken the data, we have grafted out over the 16-year period with regards to the amount of replacements versus repairs in the area that we've reviewed. We also included data for another area which is adjacent to this, which is in Phase 3. This is an example of just the type of, some of the data that we've gone through. So what we've done is, we've gone and taking a look at all of the records by parcel. So we took a look at every single parcel that was in the area Phase 2 that was being studied, all the parcels in Phase 3 over a 16-year period, and took a look at, through all those records that I mentioned before, in order to determine if, what type of repairs or replacements were done on the properties. And we actually went through and noted every one of them. You'll see, you know, where it says a new system was put in place. We've taken a look what year the house was actually built, so that's when the septic system was originally put in place. There was some older data, you'll see, from the 80s and 90s, but the majority of the data we wanted to go through was to look from 2000 until 2016, so it was more up-to-date for, you know, for this purpose. At the efforts of Barbara and Rick, we were able to have a meeting with Bucks County Water and Sewer. They came in on August 1st to meet with us. And the purpose of the meeting was to try to find a way that we would be able to develop a long-term plan for Doylestown Township with regards to on-lot septic management and moving forward with areas of the township that might benefit from public sewers in the future. And the reason why we did this was to try to avoid some of the issues of the past, where, you know, 20 years ago was identified an area of the township that might need sewers, and it took decades in order to get to the point where you were finally able to get a project going. And what happens is, it leaves a lot of ambiguity for the homeowner, because the homeowners really don't know what to do. They don't know how to move forward with regards to, do I repair my system? Do I hold off? What do I need to, what do I need to do? So we met with Bucks County Water and Sewer, the letters available in the public record. They in turn, you know, shared with us their plans for the area going forward, in the sense of how much capacity do you have, the ability to turn around a project. They also are willing to, if we can, at the request of the supervisors, they're willing to have a member of their Bucks County Water and Sewer come in as a liaison with our board in order to help with communications, to help things move forward at a more efficient rate going forward. This is really the real detail that I'm sure you're looking for. So in the area that we're discussing, there's 476 tax IDs altogether in Phase 2. There were 61 records with regards to, on file with the Board of Health, of which we had about, in Phase 3, there's 97 records were found for the Board of Health out of the 721 tax IDs that we identified in the property listings. So what we've done is, we just have gone through, like I said, there's, the data is all there. We've gone through Board of Health records, the Pumper-Hauler records. We've gone through all the sewer, the septic management reports. We've taken a look at all of the storm water data over a 16-year period of time from Conestoga-Rover, which has showed that there are hotspots with human fecal coliform, not just fecal coliform, but human fecal coliform, in the storm water outlets in various parts of this area within Phase 2. So what we're asking the Board of Supervisors to consider is to allow Bucks County Water and Sewer to do a preliminary feasibility study for possibly looking at sewers in this area, which we've determined and listed as Phase 2. We also would like the Board of Supervisors to come along and allow Bucks County Water and Sewer to have, appoint a liaison to our board in order to be able to, you know, have a better flow of information. And then we're also recommending that the authority add, engage with Bucks County Water and Sewer to possibly update our 537 plan to the state as a result of what they find as their, with the feasibility study. Because if they determine, as we believe, that this area could benefit from public sewer, then we need to update the 537 plan to the state.
Well, don't you think that Bucks County Water and Sewer is going to say that we'll benefit by sewers? I mean, the question is, isn't it, do we have, should we be moving in that direction for public health concerns?
What we've determined from a public health concern is that there is a need in the area.
Okay.
It's not as, the numbers aren't as, I guess, as high as a percentage as we found in the Pebble Hill, Pebble Ridge area, but, you know, we have a, the amount of homes in the 12% to 15% range over the 16-year period that show that there's an issue in that particular area.
And just so the Board recalls, the 537 plan was updated in 2000, 2001, so it's probably due for a big overhaul for the overall township as well. So it couldn't hurt to do that process, and that is something that Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority will work with municipalities on to update at no cost.
Okay. Well, it's pleasure of the Board. Want to move in this direction?
Yes.
Get the feasibility study?
Yes.
Yes.
You got it.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Wait, you know what? Let me put that to a vote. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Is that for both?
Yes.
The feasibility study and 537 update?
Yes.
I think one of those would be the other.
That would be a motion.
Okay.
Got it. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda, is any visitor or public comments? All right. Please take the podium, or the, the mic over there, if it's closer to you, and identify yourself.
Phil Laird, I'm from the Estates of Doylestown. I thought we were, I thought on the agenda was going to be trash collection this evening, but obviously it wasn't, so...
No, it's not on the agenda.
The only question I want to bring to the Board, maybe you're aware of it, maybe you're not, but in the Estates, now that the roads have been all repaved, there are now five trash collection companies in there, and they're collecting trash every day, and Saturdays.
Yeah, we get this bill on occasion, and what we suggest to you, and I think it's Ryan's suggestion, and she says it all the time, so I'll save you the trouble, is that the neighbors should get together and decide on one, so that there's only one coming in, but we can't make that decision for you.
No, I'm not saying for you to make the decision on one. I'm saying, why can't you, and Jeff, maybe you can give some insight on this, why can't you, why can't the township say? Trash can be collected by five companies, but it can only be collected on Mondays and Thursdays, or pick two days.
Because they're private enterprises. They're going to do it when they're going to do it.
Well...
Can't mandate it.
Well, I don't want to argue about it. I know other townships do it. I know when, we have, we have a house in Florida, and they mandate it, so...
Well, if we picked one trash hauler...
No, you don't have to pick one trash collector. But I'm just bringing it to your attention. You spent a lot of money doing the roads in the Estates. Now you got five trash collection companies doing it five days a week, and sometimes on Saturdays, and you got trash and recyclable cans out every day of the week. It looks terrible.
Yeah, is there any way that we can mandate the, when the five different trash haulers pick up?
You can, you can require that they not start before a certain time and end by a certain time. It may be worthwhile considering a Saturday restriction, but I think we should manage and outlook into that further. We'll get back to you when we have the chance to look at that.
That's fine. I mean, I'm just bringing it to your attention. It's up to you. I mean, you've spent a lot of money on the roads, and you got these big trucks in there five, six days a week, so I'll just bring it to your attention.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Other comments? Please take the microphone, sir.
Good afternoon, Chairman Lyons. My name is Richard Anthies, A-N-T-H-E-S, and if you'll permit me to read from my script this way here, I won't get off-point, and I'll keep it short. My name is Richard Anthies, and my wife and I recently moved to Doylestown Township in May of this year. My wife and I chose the neighborhood of El Jan Drive for multitude of reasons, and in spite of the challenges of moving after 30 years, we have been happy with our decision. I would like to begin today by thanking the Township Supervisors for the opportunity to speak here and make them aware of all the different departments that I have dealt with since I came there in May, namely, the Police Department and the Code Enforcement Department. You should note that your day-to-day operations are in helpful hands, and the residents of the township should see themselves as fortunate as I do. My presence today was recommended by a patrolman from this past Saturday's interaction after a verbal criticizing that I received from a neighbor on El Jan Drive. Since July, this individual has made numerous accusations and grievances about me, and actions that he deems to be unneighborly. He has chosen to air them in a multitude of venues, to and include his own private property by way of signs, missives on his art web page, and even to using foul language loudly in our small cul-de-sac. He seems to have taken an issue with my presence in the street while walking my dog with the aid of a motorized wheelchair, along with the installation and use of surveillance cameras on my property, and the installation of a citizen's man antenna affixed to my home. In every instance, as it has related to this neighbor, when warranted, I have contacted the police. Doylestown Township Department arrives shortly after being called, are always ready, willing, and able to speak with me, and take the time to do so. I've been made aware each time of the resolution to them speaking with the neighbor, which has included making him aware that my actions that he has taken issue with are not in fact illegal. However, he still continues to proclaim his frustration. In an effort to quell the situation as much as possible without completely altering my life to satisfy another, I have lessened the amount of walking in the street with my dog, and have moved the majority of his daily exercise needs to my property only. I have not, however, removed the cameras from my home. I have met with many individuals, Code Enforcement Department, and have reviewed with them at length the nature of my neighbor's issues with these items, and have been assured that I am in no violation of any township codes. While I'm somewhat unsure of the actions this body will be able to assist me with in this situation, I presently find myself and my family, and I feel beholden to fill the advice given to me by the officer on Sunday, and present a bird's-eye view of their present environment in one of your neighborhoods. If there's anything the Board of Township Supervisors believe would prove helpful to resolve this community dispute, I would be more than grateful for your thoughts and ideas. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to take them. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Anthies, welcome to Doylestown Township. I'm sorry that your neighborhood isn't as welcoming as you find the rest of the township, but I would be happy to sit down with you and your neighbor and try and mediate the dispute, if he's willing, but I can't make him do it if he doesn't want to.
And I will reflect back that I don't think it will go well, even if we do.
You'd be surprised.
There has not been any ability to, after multiple times of telling him that there's not an issue that he can become frustrated with, it continues. This is now in our third month.
Well, just make the suggestion, and I'll be available if the two of you want to do that.
It won't be from me. I cannot make that, we're at a point where I stay to my side of the street.
Okay.
I don't look to his side of the street. I try to avoid the individual at length, and it's difficult.
Maybe the next time one of our patrolmen are out there, they can make that suggestion.
I'm familiar with the situation going on out there, and we have mediated it to the point where it hasn't risen to the level of criminal activity, however, it is getting close to that point, and if it continues, that we will file charges.
Okay. Just let me know if I can do anything before that, short of that. Thank you, Mr. Anthies.
May I ask a question of the chief, if I may? Am I at a point where, do I wait one more, or do I make my issue official?
I will give you the advice I give every resident. If you have concerns, you call us immediately, so we can address each and every situation and determine if there's an ongoing course of conduct that could be criminal, then we can act on it. If we're only advised of so many, our hands get tired. You are not bothering us by calling us.
I've been assured that, and it is appreciated. I just, I'm at a point where the frustration level and the concern for my own well-being, I mean, even after Sunday's issues, and when I went out, you came and followed me. It's, you know, it's a little unnerving.
As each of my officers tell you, please call us when it occurs. We'll come out and address each situation independent of each else, and if the totality gets to the point where it's considered harassment to ongoing conduct, we'll take care of it. I don't know how else to let you know.
Just keep calling. Anytime you see anything, anything, just call.
I can do that. I'm just curious, I mean, that's half the reason for the cameras, is to sit there and give you the proof that it's actually, it's taking place.
Okay.
I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, any other visitors have a comment? Please take the stand, please. I have the stand. I just said, "take the stand." I apologize.
My name is Dorothy Glenn Hill. I live at 26 Charter Oak Court in Doylestown Township.
Can I interrupt you? You're on the agenda. We'll get to you.
Oh, I am on the agenda?
Yes. You're under correspondence. Yes, no problem. We're going to get to you. Any other public or comment, public or visitor's comment? Hearing none, I'm moving on with the announcements, and there are plenty of them, so be patient. Our next meeting is Tuesday, October 2nd, at 4 o'clock. We're going to have a budget work session on that day at 2 o'clock, and we're going to do our topping out ceremony, which is putting the last stick or something at the top of the building at 1:15. Thompson Performing Arts Series continues. All then start at 7, unless otherwise noted. The Big Chill Classic Rock is 11 a.m. to 3, which is in conjunction with the project Hero Ride 2 Recovery, and that's on September 22nd. The movie Paddington 2 is on September 28th. The Bicentennial Celebration Big Birthday Party is finally happening with the Big Romeo and fireworks on September 29th, and that's Saturday. The park's going to close at 12 p.m. It will reopen again at 5 p.m. Vehicle access will be $5 a car. So that's a big celebration. Please come, there's going to be lots of special surprises. We will hang our new flag, we'll get a new state flag. It's going to be very cool, so do come. Big Romeo and the best fireworks you're going to see anywhere in the northeast part of the country. Bicentennial Celebration continues. We have memorabilia for sale, the Mercer tiles and bricks, and we're having our Time Capsule dedication on December 18th, but before that, we're collecting all the stuff for the Time Capsule, and the last contribution will be received on October 15. Veterans Day Celebration is November 11. Tomorrow, here, we're going to have a picture taken of all the veterans that we could gather for the Veterans Day Celebration. So if you're a veteran, 3 o'clock, come here, we'll take your picture with the rest of the veterans that are going to be here. The Veteran Celebration, we believe, is going to be now at the Firehouse. Or, we're not sure yet. But, to be determined. It'll be 1 to 3 p.m. The auxiliary, Women's Auxiliary for Engine Number 1, will be doing the food. It's going to be a lovely event. Last chance to buy amusement tickets. I guess, I guess the weather's changing. The last chance to buy amusement park tickets is Friday, September 21st, at 3 p.m. Radio City Christmas Spectacular Bus Trip is November 19th, it's $130 per person. And the Leaf and Yard Waste Recycling is the third Saturday of each month, from 9 a.m. to 11. Drop-off site is the New Britton Road entrance to Central Park. So visit our website for more information. All right. Minutes approval for the regular meeting of August 21st, 2018. Does everyone have a chance to review those minutes?
Yes.
Any changes, corrections?
I have noted two changes.
Okay.
The first is under my comments, section F, it said that 100 maple trees donated by Bucks Beautiful are also available for sale. They were donated, they are available for sale. And the second change I noted was under the Request Amendment to Code About Bamboo. It had stated clumping bamboo will cause no harm to the township. It was actually the opposite. That's it?
Yes, those are two corrections. Any other changes, eliminations? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for those two corrections?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, a request for the waiver of zoning permit fees from Young Alex Spear. We see the opportunity to give this young man the up to do a project at Temple Judea for his Eagle Scout.
I'll make the motion.
Motion to waive $197.50 zoning permit fee. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. 26 Charter Oak, you don't have to get up yet, because we have your correspondence. Everyone had a chance to review this.
Yes.
Have you had a chance to review this?
I saw it, yes.
Well, I'll take a stand. Ms. Glenn Hill, Glenn Hill. You come to us for relief, in what respect?
Okay.
Now you can go up.
Okay.
How can we help you with this?
Okay, well, I had a contractor come out to put new decking on the top deck, which was Pulte built, original.
Yeah, in 1997.
Yes, yes. And it had two pillars coming up.
Right.
And a T across the top. So when the contractor removed the original decking, he had me come out, and he said that you can see where this deck has dropped, like, four inches. The one side, apparently there was a concrete on the one side, one pillar, but on the other pillar, there was no footing.
Right. We got this information. We know, we know what your, what the issue is.
Okay.
You say that Pulte built this wrong, and at the time, our code enforcement inspected it, and they didn't inspect it.
And I have the paper say that it was okay.
Right. So, and then your contractor fixed it, and now, what is it that you're looking for the township to do?
Well, because the two pillars came up from, I have a picture. They come up from the bottom deck, okay?
You stay with the microphone. Thank you. Sorry.
Okay, so, he had to remove the bottom deck, and to go stand in the joist, and jack it up, and dig down, and put a new footer in. And so I have a picture of the footer that he put in, and I have a picture to show you the line where it was jacked up. You can see the line there, how much it had to be jacked up. So because of the error, I think, that the township did 20 years ago, it cost me $12,126.21 to have this repaired, and I think the township owes me that money.
Okay, I see your point, but that's probably not going to happen. I'll tell you why. Number one, it's, it's too hard to establish that, it's impossible to establish that the township did anything wrong. Number two, there's no opportunity for us to review what was done, because the repair's already been made. Three, it's way too far in time, so that if you have a complaint, it would be against Pulte, not against the township, and we're not in a position...
Number four, the township has no liability whatsoever for issues associated with inspections. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Mason, that the contractor who built your deck is the same contractor that did your repairs?
No, that was the lower deck. The upper deck was Pulte. She has two decks.
I have two decks.
At first, yeah, at first, we didn't realize, yeah, we didn't realize she had two decks. It was unclear.
I stand corrected.
Yeah, but it, but it was inspected. We have that information from 1997.
So, and we're not responsible for private property complaints, and that's what that is. So you'd have to go against Pulte, and if they weren't sure...
But it was your inspector that inspected it and okayed it.
But we can't say that, you can't prove, nor can we say, nor, and is so far removed, that he did anything wrong.
Well, if the side of the deck dropped four inches, he didn't do something right.
Well, he didn't build it.
He did build it.
Our inspector did not build it.
Oh, the inspector did not, no. No, he did not build it. Pulte built it.
Right.
But he gave the okay to build it.
Well, it could have been stone there, or anything else that could have been an impediment to seeing, and besides, there's no legal responsibility...
I mean, you're pressed from the quarry, so it's difficult to know.
...for circumstances related to this.
So then you buy a home in the township, and you think that you're doing, that everything's up to code, and it's not, so it's...
Township's not a guarantor that everything is built properly. We go and inspect, and there are rules and regulations and requirements for... We go and inspect, and there are rules and regulations and requirements for inspection, but we're not a guarantor. And this is genuinely a private property issue with your builder, not with the township. And if, you know, honestly, if it were just a couple of months ago, but we're talking 20 years, there's no way that even if we wanted to do something about this, even if we wanted to try and make you haul it, it's just too far removed in time for us even to begin to look at this.
So then we're to sit there and think, like, all the footers on my house, they could not be there or not done properly, now my house is going to sink?
I don't know how to use that question.
You have to just take it up with the builder of the deck.
Not the builder of the, the builder of the deck is Pulte. He was the original builder.
Right, so I would talk to them about that. I would, that's who you kind of have to take the issue with.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, reports from the solicitor.
We will have some topics to discuss later, but not at the moment.
Chief?
Nothing to report.
Engineer?
Nothing at this time.
Director of op?
You have my memo requesting approval of the CS Davidson proposal to provide a CS DADM asset management subscription in totaling $2,400 per year. As you recall, this proposal was put before you back in April 10th of 2018. At that time, there were questions regarding the terms and conditions. The terms and conditions were revised.
No, they weren't.
There were revisions to the terms.
Modifications to the service and prices still is an unintelligible paragraph, and it doesn't make any sense. Sorry.
They were supposed to look to by their corporate solicitors, it's all like...
It's not...
And I didn't get a chance to look at the revision, so I might...
I don't see any changes to it, and if they made any changes, they made it worse because I still don't understand it.
Okay.
Well, how did we get to this point where Dave thinks everything's okay, gets it on the agenda?
I read it. I mean, I read it.
Well, we shouldn't have even had it on the agenda.
Well, I don't get to see what's on the agenda before it's on the agenda until it's on the agenda.
It was in the packet.
It's in my packet. I didn't get to see it before it gets on the agenda.
Dave, did you read it?
I already looked at it once, Rick, and said it was no good.
Because I'm not, that's not my profession. I'm not a solicitor, and I don't, you know, again, of just asking for the, for the service to be approved, that's all. I understand.
Okay, moving on. Can we table this until they do it right?
I'll look at it. Like I said, I got the packet yesterday, and I didn't get a chance to look at it, so I will look at it.
Does anybody else want to speak to this? I mean, it's paragraph, it's the modifications to the service prices.
No, if you're not happy with it and you don't understand it, then table it and...
Make a motion, we table it to the next meeting.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Call in favor of the motion to table?
Aye.
All right. Manager?
Yes, we've received correspondence from Pickering Courts in Somerson, who's been township engineer, provided service to us for many years. They have informed us that Mario Canales, our longtime engineer, will be retiring at the end of this year. Congratulations, and we're sad.
That is lukewarm.
It's because we're sad.
We're sad.
See, Mr. Murphy.
All right, we don't need a motion, do we?
No, but the second part is that Pickering Courts in Somerson has decided that they will no longer provide municipal engineering services commencing in January, so we will need to find a new township engineering firm. And I would just like, know how the board would like to proceed in that process.
I think we should start the RFP process if everybody's in consensus.
Yep, let's do that.
Do it.
Okay. And I would encourage not getting people, I mean, encourage companies in this jurisdiction, in this area, not from like East Jesus.
Local.
Can I just say that?
East Pitt.
Something west of the Susquehanna.
Yes.
No, no.
Local firms, got it. Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
All right, supervisors? All right, I get to start because this is really, this is really cool. Part of our bicentennial celebration is that Quits Elementary, the only elementary, the only school of Central Bucks School District in Doylestown Township, did a happy birthday card to Doylestown Township for our bicentennial. It's called Happy Birthday Doylestown Township. And they interview people, and it was just an amazing piece of work. These are fifth and sixth grade graders. They were able to get the video equipment from a learning, innovative learning grant from CB Care's Educational Foundation. They put this video together. It's wonderful. It's been on YouTube. This video was submitted to the county award and received an award from Bucks County Association of Township Officials, and then was submitted to the state award, and they just, they just won the state award. So all over the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Quits Elementary and their video, Happy Birthday Doylestown Township, is now renowned, and they won $1,000, so I wanted to tell everyone about that. It was such a great thing.
Great video.
Huh? I know, I'm not done yet. Not done yet. Okay, do you have anything, Jen?
Ah, not today, thank you.
Ken?
Nope.
Nothing today.
Well, I have something. I think it's just as cool.
Okay.
My three committees are water, sewer, and planning. But I spent the last few weeks, a good bit of the time with residents who are complaining about the significant. I've seen increase in their quarterly trash rate by Republic Waste, and I think we've all heard from residents.
Yes, we did.
One of the trash haulers in our area, Republic, deemed it necessary to increase our residents' rates from the previous $80 range to $138, $230, and $320 per quarter, and some other rates in between. They just, they don't have a, they just, I don't know how they pick their rates. Republic offers no options. For example, to reduce pickups from twice a week to once a week. Basically, when I called, it was take it or leave it. I left. It appears that the world demand for these raw materials has dropped significantly, and therefore China will no longer accept the recycled products. No trash hauler has increased their rates significantly other than Republic. One of the township's responsibilities is to protect and represent our residents. To that end, the township has had communication with Republic Waste. Stephanie will talk maybe a little bit about that when I'm done. The township at times has looked at contracting with one trash hauler for the entire township, as came up a little earlier. The downsides of this option outweigh any of the benefits. The township posts the approved trash haulers list on our website. Call these companies for quotes. I personally am paying $69 per quarter for Whitetail Trash to pick up once a week. As I tell everyone who contacted me and contacts me, the township can only do so much. Make your voice heard. Contact Bucks County Consumer Protection Agency, the township, the Better Business Bureau, whoever. The adage that the squeaky wheel gets the grease is true, whether we like it or not. If you're hesitant to take any action and want some advice, you can contact me personally via email. And I'll pass it to Stephanie if she has anything to add to that.
We have had several phone calls from residents regarding Republic. We also had some phone calls from residents who use advanced disposal. I shared with the board, sent via email, the information that was presented at the Shellfont Borough. They have contract trash hauling with advanced disposal, and they put out a very nice presentation to them on the reasons behind the cost increases and kind of what's going to come down the pike, and some of the things, you know, looking ahead and what those options and solutions are. And we've talked to Whitetail, who also agreed that there's definitely a problem out there. And although they've got some contracts in place elsewhere, they're able to offer the lower rates at this point in time. But even they indicated that at some point in time, prices will go up, and what is happening worldwide is going to continue to impact all of us at a local level. And education, and I've talked to Republic, and I'm going to be talking to advanced disposal as well, and probably waste management, who also serves a large part of our community. Education's got to be the key. We have to kind of go back to the basics on the recycling because the contamination of when people want to recycle the pizza box, they think, oh, they take corrugated cardboard, we can do the pizza box. Well, the pizza box is contaminated because it has the grease and residue from the pizza, so it's really not recyclable, for example. And so we're putting a link out on the website from Information, the County, sort of the A to Z County Planning Commission's put together, and we will, working with our Environmental Advisory Council, kind of go back to the basics. We've been doing it for recycling for a long time, but we've got to go back to the basics in terms of what material and how you really put it out for recyclable so that we know the items are clean and empty and ready to be recycled.
It's difficult. I don't want to talk, I don't want to trash talk, but even the Bucks County Planning Commissions that they sent out, it's, I mean, I didn't realize I was in noncompliance.
I didn't know you couldn't recycle pizza boxes.
You can't put your shredded paper in a plastic bag and put that in recycle. You have to empty it. So I'm guilty there. You can't put paper plates and paper cups in the recycle. So, and even scrap metal, you know, you sometimes break something off, a 12 inches piece of metal. So it's very, very difficult, and I think it's becoming much more challenging, and I think hopefully some action is taken somewhere somehow, but...
Rick, when you talk to Republic, Rick, if you didn't recycle, what would the rate be?
No, they have to recycle. They have to give you one bin of each.
Why?
That's our ordinance. That's, I think, the state law, in fact.
Okay. So if it, I'm just projecting down the road. Say the situation got really bad, what would you need to change to not recycle? Put everything to trash to steam?
You know, I can remember, not to tell, but we came here, we used to have the green box where we had the batteries.
Yeah.
And we spent a lot of, not a lot, we spent some township money just to keep batteries out of the landfills. And then they come back and they say, well, no, it's cheaper to better, less than all, put them in the landfill. So we got out of that business. And I understand newspapers and cardboard is one thing, but once you start getting into all these other things, Ken, it's mind boggling. Like I said, I didn't realize I was in violation, and I'm not going to turn myself in, but it was just normal things.
I think you should just pay the $320 a month.
Yeah.
Quarterly.
A quarter, but it's unfortunate that I've run into residents, they come up to me, and one showed me his bill for $320, and he was paying 89. And now he's got to pay 320. And I think they were more in my age group, and I think that's part of it. They just keep paying. They're just, they're going to pay whatever the bill is, and I think that's sad.
So are we having the EAC do anything different with this?
Well, this is on our website.
Yeah, that is.
If they're going to be involved in investigating what to do.
Options. Options. I did invite Republic to come, and I know Whitetail reached out to me. They're willing, because there's so much competition between everybody, they don't necessarily want to come to the meeting, but if anyone here is hear from one of the trash haulers, you know, certainly, you know, feel free to speak.
I don't see anybody jumping up and down.
Yeah, no question.
I got a call from the council for Republic who told me that they didn't want to appear because they didn't want to be the one single out for giving the bad news. So the impression I got was they'd be happy to meet with the manager or even a supervisor or two, provided it wasn't a public forum unless all of them came, so...
Gotcha. Okay.
Anything else, Rick?
No, that's enough trash.
Ryan?
Nothing for me.
Okay, moving on. Any unfinished business? Hearing none. Next item on the agenda is the Burke Track public hearing.
The first aspect of your consideration of the Burke Track proposal is your consideration of the conditional use application. It relates to a property at 3725 Bristol Road, tax parcel 9-7-6. An application was submitted by Winchester Acquisitions LP for conditional use approval to develop that tax parcel using the B-15 option in the R1 zoning district, so as to be permitted to construct eight single-family attached dwellings. Notice of the hearing appeared in the intelligencer on August 31, 2018, and again on September 7, 2018. The plan, which is the subject of the application, was prepared by Gilmore Associates, Inc., was dated January 31, and was last revised May 30, 2018. The application, as I mentioned, seeks to utilize the B-15 use. The township's file, including any old applications, reports and the like, are incorporated into the record. First of all, does anyone here desire party status? I see no one. Mr. Murphy, it's your application.
Thank you, and good evening. This process started almost a year and a half ago when we first introduced the idea to the township in the summer of 2017. As Jeff indicated, there have been three filings and actions taken so far. Last November, we submitted an application to your zoning hearing board seeking relief because in your ordinance, you can't apply the B-15 use unless you had a minimum of 10 acres. And because of the taking for the parkway, the acreage of the property had been reduced from slightly more than the minimum to 8.9 acres. So we got relief last November to apply the B-15 to the site that's 8.9 acres. With that competence, earlier this year, late January, we submitted the formal conditional use application that Jeff made mention of. And as a result of that, we've had, we followed your normal process to have the plans, the subdivision plans, as well as the conditional use application process concurrently. We've met with your planning commission and got a favorable recommendation. This board previously had acknowledged the home on the site to qualify as historic to make the B-15 use possible. And most recently this summer, we had to seek a de minimis variance from your zoning hearing board. We went a second time because the calculation of density was not to exceed two acre, or two units per acre. Had we not engineered it to do four decimal points, we would have been fine, but the calculation was 2.018. So we went back to the zoning hearing board in the summer to get relief so that we could maintain that density. So I think we've cleared all the initial hurdles, and as Jeff said, we're here tonight for two reasons. One, to have the board consider the conditional use on its merits, and then assuming we have that approval in place, the next second part of it would be to approve the preliminary and final land development plans. Jeff was kind enough to share with me his outline for the conditional use. We also would incorporate, as Jeff did, the review letters from your planner, which highlight all the principal criteria that we have to meet in order to qualify for that conditional use. I'm sure you're well familiar with them. They include the fact that we are preserving the historic home on the site. There is a two-story stone dwelling. There is a stone barn on the site. All of these, the main homestead and the appurtenances are being preserved, as you can see on the plan that is on the easel. We've already discussed and agreed that this use and the way it's laid the property out is entirely consistent with the surrounding uses in the township. It meets all the natural resource standards that are applied to properties generally in the township. It's compatible with the existing surrounding neighborhood, and it takes full advantage and doesn't interfere with the parkway expansion that previously took place. The size and scope of it, we're talking about eight new homes in addition to the main dwelling is compatible in terms of size and character. The roadway network, we've had analyzed, and it's more than adequate to service this minimal use. And I think the architectural plans with Mr. Canavan has, we should incorporate as well because that is also an issue that is a criterion that we have to satisfy in the ordinance. And perhaps we can get Mr. Canavan to be sworn, and he can talk briefly about the architecturals.
Sorry to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Full name and address, Chris, if you would.
Not, not, you got to get to the microphone.
Sorry, sorry. Christopher R. Canavan, Senior Vice President, WB Homes, 404 North Summie Town Pike, North Wales, PA.
Okay.
Do you want the portable microphone on him?
Let me get myself set up. You do.
You do.
I'm just having Mr. Murphy pass out the smaller versions of what's on the board here. As part of the conditional use process, we were tasked with also creating architectural compatibility with the historic structures. And what we attempted to do, if I can maybe do this, I'm going to stand over here and hold this one up. I have pictures on the easel right now of the existing home and the existing barn that is on the property. Pennsylvania fieldstone, typical to this area, has a series of dormer roofs and typical stone front on the unit. And we attempted to take some of the architectural styling from those units into the units we're designing. The units we're designing will be a combination of masonry and hardy plank finishes, along with some board and batten, which mirrors the sidings on the barn. We do have some shingle, a cedar-shaped shingle in the middle there to try to mirror the roof style of the building. And then we have stone that will be complementary to the stone that is within the structure, obviously while designing it to a more modern structure for what we're attempting to do. These are all 32-foot wide units. That'll be about 70 feet deep. And if you can turn that around, Ron.
Is that real stone?
That is probably cultured stone on the units.
Lick and stick? What kind of, what do you mean by that?
I do not like the term lick and stick, but.
That's what it is.
Yeah, it's manufactured stone. Would be on there with a hardy plank finish. We will use the full rise for the fireplace, even though it will be a gas fireplace. We are doing that for architectural elements to keep in keeping with the building. And we have pulled the same architectural elements along the side of the units, too, so that from any given angle, you have some variety of look for the units. So we've attempted to make the architecture sort of blend in with what's on the property.
So the garage that is there now, that will be, that will be gone?
The, okay, go back to the site plan. The only structures that will remain on the site, there's the existing stone house, which is right up against the road.
Yeah.
There is the existing barn, and then there's a two-bay garage that is serving the house. Everything else to the rear, which is the large pole barn.
That big, yeah.
Plus a series of outbuildings, all of those will be removed.
So big on.
Correct.
Is there anything that you're going to do for, I mean, I assume the original home will be up for sale?
Correct.
Is there anything you're going, I mean, it is literally on the road. I mean, is there anything you're going to do to, I don't know, it just makes me nervous.
We've attempted to, well, a couple of things I think that are a benefit from this effort. Currently, this property takes access to the house with two driveways.
Right.
Rather dangerous onto Bristol. Those are being removed.
So they'll come in and kind of.
And they will be tied internally into the development, so they'll be able to come out and line up here. So really, their orientation, once they pull in.
All changed.
Is oriented into the development, which is nice. The other thing is, we worked with PennDOT. There's an existing rather mature row of trees along the property. It does, when you're inside the property, really separate you from the roadway. We've managed to make sure that the improvements we're doing on Bristol, and in conjunction with our development, will not remove any of that vegetation. And what we will end up doing is try filling in the gaps where the driveway are removed, so that that does keep it separated from that area.
So it becomes that, that farmhouse becomes part of the internal neighborhood?
Correct. And the views they'll have are more oriented towards the development. And then we will, structurally, before we sell the property, we're not intending to do any exterior renovations. The building's in fairly good shape that way. The only thing we will do is, it is somewhat stuck in a late '70s, early '80s motif inside, and that will need to be modernized before we look to put it on the market.
I don't have any other questions for Mr. Canavan, and I don't have any other evidence beyond introducing, as Jeff did and made part of the record, the review letters commenting and confirming that we have satisfied all the criteria for conditional use.
One question. It's more traffic flow in and out of the development?
Yes.
So can they, is there a left-hand turn allowed?
We are. There's an existing left-turn lane coming westbound on Bristol for Coachlight here. We will be removing the existing striping in the roadway and creating a designated left-turn lane into our development also. Without there, it's just a restriping exercise. And they are lined, center line to center line, so it's in conjunction with the development structure. If you're out there, this driveway is probably another 80 feet beyond. There's an existing driveway behind the barn here. That is another 80 feet west, so it's further away from the main intersection also.
Mr. Tomko?
Just a, you showed the internal pedestrian trail there. Can you describe or tell us who's going to maintain, who's responsible, how that's going to be maintained?
There will be a homeowners association associated with this development. And the trail, as shown on here, which is meeting your township specifications, except for a minor, whatever, to narrow it through here because of some trees, will be owned and maintained by the homeowners association, but will be open to the public via appropriate dedication language I'm sure Mr. Gordon will come up with. And we are making the connection out to the trail along to O-Till.
Thanks.
Okay.
And we worked, I mean, had a rather extensive discussion with the planning commission to make sure it's far enough away from the intersection to be safe. And there is an old springhouse down in here that the trail will be brought around so that as to.
They take it to the edge of their property.
Chris, can you verify, you're taking it to the edge of your property?
We are taking, yeah, the tree is obscure, but it's already all the way to the edge. So if this develops ever, they'll be right there for future connection.
Right. And just so everybody is reminded, we talked about this at Bike and Hike this morning, Shellphone, New Britain Township have a grant that will be bringing trail from Blue Jay up the road to Bristol crossing, coming up. So everything gets kind of connected along Upper State and everything as well. So at some point, we'll be able to tie all that in there at that intersection when something happens with that next property over.
And obviously, this worked out well because of how close the buildings are here to have that run internal and not interfering with the house.
And the planning commission, Mr. Colallo and I, we're all out at the site. We walked it. And he's been also to the Bike and Hike committee.
Any other questions? Any questions in the public? See, none. If the board was inclined to approve the conditional use, it's subject to the following conditions. Receipt of final subdivision approved from the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors, compliance with the two prior decisions of the Doylestown Township Zoning Hearing Board, compliance with the requirements of the Doylestown Township zoning ordinance and the conditional use criteria as set forth in Mr. Pally's Planning Code, preservation of the historic home, barn, and the two-bay garage, and that the plan be developed in accordance with the architectural plans presented by the applicant. Mr. Murphy, are those conditions satisfactory?
They are.
The chair will entertain, will entertain a motion to approve the conditional use.
I'll second.
Any other questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're good to go on that one.
Okay, the next one is the subdivision and land development aspects of the same project. And there are, it's going to take me a longer time. You know the history, so I'll need to repeat that.
Right.
If you were inclined to approve the preliminary final plan as recommended by your planning commission, it would be subject to the following conditions. Compliance with the conditions imposed as part of the conditional use approval, including the two decisions by the Doylestown Township Zoning Hearing Board. Compliance with the Pickering Courts and the Somerson Review Letter dated June 12, 2018, except for item 8 on page 4, related to the Bucks County Planning Commission's concern related to curbing. Instead, the applicant will install a four-foot shoulder to the extent of Elizabeth Lane to the Westley property line in lieu of adding curbing. Compliance with the Michael Baker National Report dated June 15, 2018. Compliance with Penoni Report dated June 19, 2018. Compliance with the Boucher and James Report dated June 18, 2018. Compliance with the SC Engineers Letter dated June 14, 2018. Compliance with the Correspondence with Chief Logan dated June 6, 2018. The grant of various waivers that are noted in the Gilmore Associates Letter dated June 25, 2018, related to preliminary final existing features, collector roads, a whole variety of them. I don't want to go over them. They're all in your packet. Applicant shall be permitted to construct a 24-foot wide road with parking allowed on one side, but it will be restricted in the cul-de-sac bowl, with notes to be added to the plan accordingly. Applicant shall add a second drainage pipe to the trail between Spring House and Elizabeth Lane. Applicant shall evaluate the length of the proposed drainage pipe near 202 parkway to ensure that the two-foot shoulder on the trail can be maintained, which shall be determined by the township engineer. Applicant shall continue the 10-foot wide trail, except around the historic tree will be reduced to eight feet. Applicant to pay a fee in lieu of recreation in accordance with the township's ordinance. Applicant shall make a contribution of $1,000 for each new dwelling unit to be paid as each building permit is issued. Documents established in the HOA will be reviewed and approved by myself and the manager. Receipt of all permits and approvals of anybody having, any agencies having jurisdiction, including the Conservation District, PennDOT. Confirmation that aqua wood and sewer shall be available to the site. And lastly, funding and execution of financial security agreements and development agreements. Mr. Murphy, do you agree to those conditions?
I do.
Can you breath?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve preliminary final land development for the Burke form?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Anybody out there? All good? Calling a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're good to go?
Thank you.
Congratulations. Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, the STLR proposal. Now, this is a contract that is comprehensive.
I'm glad to hear that. As you know, this is something the staff has been looking at. It would cost $5,000 to have the analysis done for the township regarding the matter. And I would recommend that we move forward with that proposal.
We've talked about this the last meeting, I believe. Does anybody have any questions with the contract or the attachment, which was very comprehensive?
I agree.
Yep. Is there a motion to approve the contract?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. All right, next item is.
Next item is the, your consideration of the development agreement for the Anchor Medical Office Building. The form is pretty much what you saw. They've got to add some exhibits. And they were going to deliver the letter of credit, but it was coming from M&amp;T Bank, who was, whose office was in Baltimore, was hit with lightning, and they can't, couldn't get the letter of credit out today.
Oh.
So I would recommend that if you're inclined to approve it, that you hold the agreements until the letter of credit and all the other requirements are, in fact, in hand.
I agree, too. All right. So preliminary improvement is approval that we're doing without the letter of credit?
You're just going to approve it, but you're going to not have it released until all the exhibits and everything else is received.
And we don't have the original. I think they're.
She has the originals.
Originals, yeah. She's got everything. She's just waiting on that one item.
Okay. What do we need to know about this?
It's just a development agreement for the office building that you approved previously as part of the hospital project.
Also very comprehensive. Well done.
Yes, thank you.
All right, is a motion to approve the Anchor Medical Office Building.
Make a motion to approve.
Very comprehensive letter, I mean, development agreement. Pending receipt of a letter of credit.
Well, not to be released until everything is received that's necessary.
All right.
And I'll send it.
We'll do it that way.
And the chairman will execute upon receipt?
Yes.
Yes, okay, good. All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, good. Thank you. All right, I think we're getting to the end. We're not. This is the Bucks County, this is a hookup request, right?
Yes. This is the, you know where Savetta's building next to, there's a little house there.
The Lower State Road?
On Lower State Road. He's, there's a little house right next to it that's never been hooked up to Public Sewer. So you have the Pine Run at Lakeview, and then you have the new Savetta project. Right in between, there's an older home that sits there, very close to the road.
Okay.
That's never been hooked up to Public Sewer. Savetta has purchased it as part of, you know, just to kind of make sure he wants the whole area to look nice. So he's purchased it, renovated it, and they want to connect to Public Sewer, obviously with everything out on Lower State Road. There's plenty.
2433 Lower State.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the hookup?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item, Pebble Ridge, Wood Ridge area center. Oh, this is a, this is a change in pricing, huh?
This is actually, and I have Jim Maticola, who's here from, and I thought it would be good because these are the first changes and first pay order requests. This has to do with the clearing. If you remember Rutledge, when they were approved, this is a change order, but it's a decrease in the original price, correct? So that's the change order that we had. It's actually a deduct rather than an increase that you typically sometimes see. So we need to have you approve that first.
Motion for that.
You'll remember that when this was discussed before, that the concern was that it was higher than expected. So the authority agreed to bear some of the cost of the clearing and grubbing, and resulting in the reduction in the cost on the Rutledge contract.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the change order?
Motion approve, will not approve. I'll make the motion. I'll second.
I have a question.
Go ahead, please.
So I thought part of it, when I, what I understood was that it was because they took out the stump removal.
Correct.
Correct.
Who's going to remove the stumps?
The authority.
The authority is going to remove the stump.
Okay.
It's part of their contract.
Okay, part of their contract. Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, they'll do that work. It'll be done at a lesser rate.
That's great.
And then, we have our first payment to Rutledge for the work that's been done. And so you have that in your packet as well, and we need authorization in order to pay, make that very first payment, correct?
We got a motion and a second on the change order.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm calling the question on that. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we want to make the payment to, it's okay. A payment, is it the $80,029.14 to Rutledge excavation for the, and that's been cleared through, whomever has to clear it through.
Gilmore is the one who is overseeing. This is for the pump station.
I'm getting a nod, so that they're saying, release the, release it. All right. Is there a motion to release the first payment to Rutledge in the amount of $80,029.14, whatever it was? Give them the second.
I have a question.
The first payment.
Did we, was part of the process for payment that these would be reviewed with the sewer committee?
No.
Or is it afterwards?
After. They'll get, they'll get statements and stuff as to what, this is for the pump station, right? Or the clear, this is for the clearing, yeah. It's part of the bid.
Okay. Then just refresh for me. What did we agree to that the sewers committee would be reviewing on invoices?
They would, they would get regular updates into what, what's been processed and everything so they can.
And the progress of the project.
Project, yeah.
But that's after they're approved.
Yeah, they're not going to approve them. Yes, after they're approved.
Yeah, that's fine. It's one of the, as you understand.
Yeah, that's the board's responsibility.
Yeah, I think it was, in my memory, it was going to be a three-person committee. I thought Colleen, Bob, if we twist him, or, and Ken Wallace, and Joe, I'm sorry, Joe Van Houten.
They wanted.
And they were going to, once a month, sit down and look at the bills. Is that, that?
That's what I remembered, yeah.
Yeah. We haven't, I don't think we've put that together.
No, this is the first stuff that we've gotten in terms of, I mean, one's a change order, it's a reduction.
No, no, I'm just saying, but we should.
But this is the first bill that we've gotten.
Assuming Colleen and Joe Van Houten and Ken Wallace can get together once a month, I think we should get it started.
Yeah.
Will you handle that?
I don't want to hear anything about that.
You're going to do that?
That was something that we offered. I think that was something that we offered when you, when we met with you and some of the residents. We offered to meet periodically and kind of give a status. And I know Joe Van Houten wanted to do it as well.
Let's definitely get ahold of you, Joe Van Houten, and Ken Wallace, and sit down once a month, I guess.
Once a month or once every six weeks, whatever you think you need to do.
Good, okay.
All right. Okay, where are we?
I think we need a motion and a second.
We just need a motion on the payment.
There was a motion, I thought, and then you had a question. Did you have the question before the motion?
I didn't make it. I was about to. I'll make the motion.
You had a question before the motion.
I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
All right, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, they get paid. And you're going to meet.
Yeah, because now we're going to send it to.
It's informal. It's informal. It's not like you're going to establish a.
I guess the other question is, do you think that we, we need Jim Maticola to come every time that we have these payment requests?
No.
No.
Do you?
No.
No.
He might enjoy these meetings.
Well, but he'll just ride across.
I just thought this was the first time. No, I think maybe, you know, if we have any questions, we'll let you know. But quarterly, maybe, just popping in.
If they're in the packet, if we have questions, we should ask them.
We should ask them at any time so that they can make arrangements. Either here or Alex will come and.
Typically, no.
You know, yeah. Okay. That takes care of that going forward, right, Jim?
But specifically, if anytime you're going to reduce what we have to pay, that's always good. You don't have to worry about it. All right, next item on the agenda is proclamation from Lenape Valley Foundation. You're 60 years old, and we're going to give them this proclamation when they're celebrating their 60th on October 18. And I think it would be a nice thing to, they are a township entity, even though they serve all of this county and beyond. Is there a motion to approve the proclamation?
I'll move.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations to them. Treasurers' report from September 19, 2017. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the bills list for September 19, 2017. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, just real quick. The bicentennial celebration is September 29 here. Big party, fireworks. Our next meeting on October 2 at 1:15 for the topping and 2 o'clock for the budget.
Yep.